Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kristin Juris. I am the Lieutenant Governor. The Governor is traveling this week and he sends his greetings to everybody but asked me to chair in his absence. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all sign and do the pledge, rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so long.
Thank you. Jasmine, would you please take attendance?
Yes. Lieutenant Governor Juris.
Here.
Board Member Tharp.
Here.
Board Member Maxwell.
Here.
Board Member Slinger.
Here.
Board Member Schmidt.
Here.
Board Member Nieskens.
Here.
Board Member Quinlan.
Here.
Board Member Rasmussen.
She is present online but not in the room.
Board Member Comstock.
Here.
Superintendent Hedlund.
Here.
Regent Buchanan.
Present.
Regent Bowe.
Here.
Regent Dombrowski.
Here.
Regent Southworth.
Here.
Regent Folkford.
Excused.
Regent Hoyer.
Here.
Regent Jasper.
Here.
Commissioner Christian.
Here.
Quorum is present.
I believe everybody has had a chance to review the minutes from last year's Board of Education meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Next, we have in front of us a copy of today's agenda for the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. And I am very pleased to be at my first combined meeting of the Board of Education. It's an honor to be with you. I just want to begin by thanking each and every one of you for the service that you provide to the citizens of Montana. I appreciate the long hours and the resources that you devote to improving the educational opportunities from all, for all of our students in Montana. And I believe that over the past several years, you've just accomplished incredible strides in the work that you have been doing. Just noting a few, Board of Public Education implementing those public charter schools was a heavy, heavy lift. And you did it well and will continue to do it well. And it's exciting to see what opportunities the public charter schools will be affording to our students. And both Ochi and the Board of Public Education, the work that has been done in the area of providing apprenticeships and career education, the opportunities to earn credit while working have just, I think, broken a lot of barriers in providing our students great opportunities in those areas as well. We share a passion, the Governor, myself, each and every one of you, to ensure that each and every Montana student has a path to reach his or her full potential. One size, we know, doesn't fit all. And I just applaud you for the work that you have done in making that a reality for our Montana students. It's an exciting time to be in education, to see the work that you have been doing. I do just want to mention the 2025 legislature. There were numerous bills that were adopted relating to education, and I'll just highlight a few of them. It's been a goal of the Governor to get more money to our teachers in the classroom. And once again, building on the Teach Act, we, the legislature passed and the Governor signed the Stars Act this year to incentivize, once again, increasing baseline teacher pay. It also funded the Advanced Opportunities Act, continuing to work on providing career and technical training opportunities. House Bill 357, sponsored by Representative Tillman, provides funding for middle school career and technical education, so we're getting them young. And House Bill 381, sponsored by Representative Buttry, provides for educational credit for students volunteering in long-term care, nursing home care, and childcare settings. And that's innovative, and hopefully we can expand that to other volunteer opportunities because they certainly do learn when they engage in those activities. Representative Barker carried House Bill 567 that increases the flexibility of school districts to enter into multi-district agreements, cost sharing, sharing of resources. And his House Bill 606 creates a pathway for various types of school districts to reorganize, to form a unified K through 12 school district. House Bill 250, carried by Representative Beatty, clarifies the laws regarding out-of-distance, out-of-district attendance. Jonathan Carlin introduced and was passed House Bill 168, funding for preschool children with disabilities. And Melissa Romano, Representative Romano, sponsored House Bill 338, which revises laws related to early literacy, targeting interventions in math and numeracy. And the legislature also passed Senate Bill 181, sponsored by Senator Wendy Boy, to enhance accountability for implementation of the state's Indian education for all laws. And also Senate Bill 182, to provide greater flexibility for partnering to, with tribes and schools to preserve our Montana Native American languages. And finally, Senate Bill 107, sponsored by Senator Weber, provides for human trafficking prevention education in public schools. And Senator Yakovich sponsored Senate Bill 245 that provides training in human trafficking for school bus drivers. Senator Yakovich also sponsored Senate Bill 369, which strengthens suicide prevention efforts in school. That's an area where we still have work to do. So I anticipate another busy session in 2027 as we continue to innovate and, and work to provide the opportunities that our students deserve in Montana. So with that, those are my opening remarks. I would like to invite Superintendent Cici Hedlund to provide remarks.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. It is my honor to be here with all of you today. It has been great to spend this time together. We have so many common goals and I feel like we're working seamlessly and collaborating well to increase opportunities for students across Montana, and it is very energizing. I want to mention that it has been a joy to visit schools over the last many months and see our early literacy programs in action. We have work to do in our academic outcomes and starting early and making sure that our students can read by third grade is very critical, so it's great to see that teaching and learning taking place. We also have so many innovative schools going on. As you mentioned, the charter schools have been incredible. We're increasing our teacher pipeline through those as well. And I want to mention also, as we talk about data modernization, that we have so many exciting things coming, so many tools in the digital world for our educators to use, many great opportunities for us to partner in research going forward that we're excited about and working with Ochi and other agencies on so that we can improve education in Montana. The Digital Academy is here, and I want to thank Jason Neifert for his leadership in making sure that our schools have guidance on AI. We've worked very well together to produce documents that are supporting our schools and making sure that AI can be used as a tool, but also cautiously. We have the Digital Academy Frontier Learning Lab here at U of M that is helping schools integrate AI into the classrooms. And with MTSS and many of the other tools that are available, we're going to empower teachers to provide students with the interventions that they need. And our teachers are well-equipped to do that, so we look forward to implementing that. Superintendent and Regent Hoyer is one of our first pilot schools that is launching that data system, so I'm just very thankful for all of our partners here and their work that they're doing. Mental health is an area that we do need to work on. I echo that. We've heard that from our student panels lately as well as our teachers. So we are moving forward in increasing our mental health supports across the state of Montana. Dr. Tharp is very passionate about that as well. Appreciate his work in that field, in that area. And we are, like I said, just working together to increase all of our opportunities for students, whether it's college, career, or military. Member Nieskin is a great champion for our military students, and we are hoping to increase our Purple Star Schools, our schools that are recognized for supporting military families. And I appreciate her partnership in that. I also just want to say that the collaboration on the ed prep programs has been phenomenal. We are working very closely together. And coming from a recent meeting with my counterparts in other states, that's not always the case, so I'm very grateful for the relationships that we have and that we are working together to make a difference. And I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions? Chair Buchanan, would you please make some remarks on behalf of the Board of Regents?
Absolutely gratefully, and I extend a hearty thank you to you as well for your leadership with, with education. It's been a fun week. I know your board has been busy screwing around Missoula. We've had a busy week ourselves, a lot of excitement to, to share, but to summarize some of our joint and what we would call our shared policies. It's a little surprising to me that it took our constitutional delegation up until 53 years ago to create this collaborative board. As I look around at the professionals we get to work with, K through 20 seems to be in our blood. It's how we're talking. And so, again, celebrating Montana's ability to elevate this collaborative role, I'm grateful for that. This week, while we met a numerous slate of topics, the overarching theme would be what we're categorizing resident-student access. How do we increase the capture rate of Montana resident students as they think about matriculating into college? How do we get in front of them to convince them that they should look at matriculating into college? What are the strategies and themes? And this week has been full of a lot of those, and I think the biggest, well, let's start with the why, right? Nationally, we've all heard the challenges and the projections with enrollment around college education, degree attainment is pretty bleak. Montana's demographics look slightly better, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't elevate our effort to capture more of those resident students, so very excited about that. If we win in that category, Montana wins. Workforce needs get met, families have opportunities at living wages and successes for them and their own families, so highest priority for this board. How do we continue to get more folks, whether it be an associate's degree, a baccalaureate degree, or master's education, absolutely of the highest priority. Just in the time that I've been on this board, and I'm, I'm sure Clay's staff would feel like I've been around for the 53 years since this joint group has happened, the collaboration has been elevated to such an obvious level, it's just striking. I want to thank the Lieutenant Governor, your role along with your, with your partner and the Governor, clearly through appointments, have taken on a new mantra. Originally putting President Slinger on this board and obviously hearing the success of that collaboration, we cannot thank you enough for appointing Superintendent Hoyer from great falls onto our board this morning as we met with faculty members that are in the dual-credit space. The interaction was incredibly robust with context that is real ground context. So that collaboration in itself is a huge plus. Superintendent Hedlund, data modernization, we've been saying data modernization for a decade. You're now leading with that. We're so thrilled about that collaboration and so optimistic about the work we have in front of ourselves. Again, as we think about the tasks in front of us, we did, we met before this meeting with the Executive Interim Committee, our legislative partners, and it would be remiss of us as a board, as a state, to not point out the level of commitment from a financial perspective, from an initiative perspective, that the legislature has led, but not without the leadership of the executive branch. We saw record funding into the system. We approved a budget, a budget in September of $2.24 billion. Commissioner Christian and I were on this board in '07 when that budget was $945 million. That is the direct result of an executive focus on providing resources to strategies that are helping us reach more K through 12 students, help them get into the system, filling more workforce needs, ultimately lifting all boats in the state of Montana. And that doesn't happen without your leadership, Madam Lieutenant Governor, so thank you for that. You know, with that, eager to, to get excited and dig in with this group about our joint resolution, supporting FAFSA completion and direct admissions. We reviewed that as a board this morning, or yesterday, and unanimously adopted an endorsement and are excited to work with you on that. Madam Governor, Madam Lieutenant Governor, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Buchanan. Are there any questions for Chair Buchanan? Seeing none, I would invite remarks on behalf of the Board of Public Education from Chairman Tim Tharp.
Thank you, Madam Lieutenant Governor. I think, I think Todd stole some of my notes here, but I just want to acknowledge that for my long career in education, the deepest honor that I've had during that entire time has been serving as Chairman of the Board of Public Education. We have such a rock star board and staff, the representation that we have, the, the amount of work that they put in prior to every one of our meetings, and just the, the, as I encounter educators across the state who don't even know what the Board of Public Ed is and what we do, when they realize that and then realize that we're the smallest state agency out there and what we get accomplished is, is nothing short of amazing. And I just want to thank, publicly thank all of my board members and past board member for the role that, that everybody provides on that. And it's all about the partnerships. It's these partnerships working together, and it's been alluded to. We are at an unprecedented point here in Montana. I've been doing this a long time. And seeing the level of partnership, and not just between this board and the, the Board of Public Ed and the, and the Regents as the Board of Education, but the partnerships that we're seeing with OPI that have grown over this last year, the partnership that we have with Ochi, which has continued to be there, that's always been part of that with the Board of Public Ed, but continuing to grow and become even deeper. And the, the growing partnership with the legislature, I mean, we've, as Chair Buchanan alluded to, I mean, we, of course, we have to count on the legislature because that's how we fund education in Montana. We have to count on the executive because that's where the, the leadership comes from in the final stamp of approval. But I don't ever recall any time like this past week where we got to spend time with the legislators in our respective meetings. We spent time hanging out with the, the Ed interim committee on Thursday. They got to spend time hanging out with the Regents today. I'm going to poll them and find out which group was funner to be with, and we'll find that out. But they got a chance to get into our schools. They got to visit charter schools and see what we're doing there. And it's so phenomenal for them to see the results of all of the funding that they have approved, all of the policies that they've approved, and actually get to see those results. And so, and I want to echo what Todd said as well. It took, took the state of Montana a long time to figure out this cross-pollination to get K-12 in a, in a, in the Regent space, and Dr. Slinger has been invaluable to the Board of Public Ed in his perspective as well. And so, just this continued cooperation. And we're at a, we're at a point now, what we need, we need to capitalize on that. And I just want to continue, everybody to keep working together. We still have some obstacles. We have some great challenges before us, but we just keep moving forward with this. The data, serving on the Education Workforce Data Governing Board there and seeing what Superintendent Hedlund is moving forward with, and then another partnership with the executive, with the DLI, and what can be done and what we're able to get accomplished for the focus of our kids. It's just, it's a very exciting time to be in education and to be, an honor to be at the table, to be part of this. And as, as my good friend alluded to, mental health supports, they just, it's vitally important that we're taking care of our kids, we're taking care of our staff, we're taking care of our communities, the mental health challenge. I can't point to exactly why. I, I can look at research, I can identify some different reasons, I can see some ways that it's being exacerbated, but regardless of the cause, we still need to respond to it. And I applaud the legislature's efforts to have greater requirements around training, and I offer my training as well. I teach a lot of courses throughout all of eastern Montana, QPR, mental health first aid, RAP, CISM, CIT. I'm involved with all of those different things, and they are extremely vital to our communities and extremely important to me. And whenever I have an opportunity at the Board of Public Ed to have a microphone in front of me for my report, I always report on the different courses that I'm teaching and what we're involved with, just to elevate the importance of that. And the Lieutenant Governor gave me a mic right now, and so I'm going to share it as well, how important it is in our communities. Yesterday was the fifth anniversary of my brother's suicide, and it, I was involved in this work before then, but then with that, it just caused me to, to redouble my efforts and to, to help any way we can. And continuing to elevate that discussion, to remove the stigma around mental health challenges that people face, we need to do better in helping our communities. All of us continuing in partnerships, working together, and you name it, with SOPI, BPE, the Regents, Ochi, the legislature, all of us all working together, we can do some great things for our students in Montana, and we can do great things for our population, and I thank you for the continued partnerships.
Thank you, Chairman Tharp. Any questions? Thank you, and thanks for acknowledging both of you chairs, that just the important role of the legislators, and it's encouraging to see so many of them attending and truly a passion for education. We appreciate that. I also just want to acknowledge the efforts on, of employers and our private partners who have stepped up to help provide with some of the technical training that's going on, both at the K through 12 and, and the college level, and that's been a game changer as well, and we hope to see more of that public-private partnership in this area as Our next item is an action item, and as mentioned by Chair Buchanan, it relates to the resolution that was passed unanimously this week, both by the Board of Regents as well as the Board of Public Education, supporting FAFSA or Free Application for Federal Student Aid Completion and Direct Admissions. And I would, at this time, entertain a motion to approve that resolution by the full board.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I'd now like to open it up to discussion by the members of the board, and then we'll take public comment. Is there any discussion regarding the FAFSA resolution? Some of the benefits, can describe some of the benefits that you both boards see in moving forward with this?
Madam Chair, if I may. So speaking on behalf of K-12 Public Education, coming from a school district that has sixty, a little about 62% poverty, 54% community poverty rate, having the FAFSA and, and direct admission removes barriers for my students, especially those who are low-income students and who have not had, their family has not had the opportunity yet to, to attend. Anytime we can remove barriers and make these opportunities easier for students to achieve and put them in the mindset that they can achieve it, that college is for them, we're further ahead, our community's further ahead than the state of Montana is. So thank you on behalf of K-12 Education, to both boards for supporting this endeavor. I think we will see it make a huge difference, especially for our most at-risk students.
Thank you, Superintendent Hoyer. Any other comments? Superintendent Hedlund?
I just want to mention that at the Board of Public Ed, we had a great conversation about this, and I want to thank Commissioner Christensen and his team for working so closely with ours on many efforts that are going to open doors and increase these opportunities and help students see these options as attainable. I got to hear some great stats from other states that are implementing these efforts, and it's making a real difference. That is exciting to move forward in Montana. We also are sending letters out to make sure students know that they are, they do have the opportunity to attend our universities, our tier colleges, and many other programs in Montana, and we are very excited to partner on those. We are thankful for working with our educational organizations. Dr. Watson, Lance Melton, they've helped us at the OPI form communications, make sure that we're aligning our messaging to our school leaders across Montana so we can truly get this information in the hands of every student across the state. So, once again, just a very collaborative effort that is going to increase opportunities for our students across Montana, and got to hear some great stats from Dr. Slinger and others, and we're all very excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. So have the letters already gone out to the students, or will they go out serially throughout the year as ACT cycles close?
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. The letters will go out as the data come in, data comes in from the ACT, and just notify students that they are, you know, it is an option for them. And it truly changes the way that students are thinking about things they might not have seen themselves as a college-bound student, and also to understand that it doesn't necessarily mean a four-year program, but a two-year program. In Indiana, they saw those letters increase two-year enrollment by 15% and four-year enrollment by 6%.
Oh, thank you. That's amazing. Thank you for your work in getting those letters out. Any other discussion by the board? Yes, Chairman Tharp?
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. When Dr. McLean first brought this to me, I, I was, honestly, I was confused. Usually Angela does a great job explaining stuff to me, and it wasn't an issue, but I, I couldn't wrap my head around these percentages she was showing me. And she was describing, and I, no, that can't be right. How is it that, that there's that low of a percentage? I mean, when I, when I graduated from high school, when my kids graduated from high school, it was a no-brainer. It was every, you were, you're filling this out, you're going on to something. It doesn't have to be four-year, but you're going on, you're going to go do something. And part of that was automatically filling out the FAFSA. And so when, when Angela presented to me the percentages in Montana, I said, well, that, and, and then I talked to my friend, Dr. Slinger, and finding out the, the percentages of students in college filling out the FAFSA and how low that percentage was, I think, we've got to do something. We've got to promote this. And then couple that with the direct admissions and hearing those anecdotal stories about the students who just never saw them as being anything to be on post-high school. And again, whether, it doesn't have to be four-year, it doesn't even have to be two-year, it could be apprenticeship, it could be military, it can be anything, but go and do something, go get some, some, some sort of training, but who had never seen themselves in that role, to receive that letter of direct admission and then be able to, to see this, this opportunity and that money that's just quite honestly left on the table. After seeing that, I was all in on trying to figure out a way to make this happen, and I, and I appreciate the work of the OPI, along with the Governor's Office and, and Ochi, and, and making sure that we found language that was acceptable to all parties, and I fully support this.
Thank you, Chairman Tharp. Any other discussion? Yes. Yep.
I apologize to the Regents. They've watched me skip this rock before, but we have all the right people in the room here for this. So two years ago, Deputy Commissioner Teal spearheaded a survey, and I believe it was like the largest survey that, that Ochi has ever run, and it was perceptions of higher education. And the, the, the output of, of the survey, basically, what, what stood out to all of us was that the lowest-income earners in Montana overwhelmingly deemed, you know, college, higher ed is unaffordable. That same year, we left $9 million of FAFSA on the table. So with the data modernization that we're, we're starting to talk about, I just kind of thought that that was just, we can kind of bow this whole thing together. There's, there's some really exciting stuff that's, that's all coming together at the same time. So this has been a few years of me saying the same thing and, and everyone else at this table, so it just, it feels good to, to have this resolution here today.
Thank you, Regent Southworth. Any other discussion? I would now like to invite comment on the pending motion to approve the FAFSA resolution from any members of the public who would like to comment. I do request that you would limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public members who support or oppose the proposed motion to approve this Going once? Going twice? I will take that as silent support. Any further discussion by the board before I call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve the FAFSA joint resolution indicates, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. It'll be exciting to see the results that are generated by this. And was there discussion, when do you contemplate that the Stakeholder Working Group will be stood up?
We'll get moving.
We'll get moving soon on that. There are no further items for the board to entertain, but I will now open the floor up to the public for any comments that are within our jurisdiction that don't pertain specifically to the agenda. And would you please, for the record, state your name, and if you're representing anybody, your affiliation? Thank you.
Lieutenant Governor Juris, Chair Buchanan, Chair Tharp, Regents, and members of the Board of Public Ed. For the record, my name is Rob Watson. I am the Executive Director for School Administrators in Montana. Thank you very much for giving me just a few minutes today. Governor, Lieutenant Governor Juris mentioned earlier the, I guess, the favorite part of the Constitution that I appreciate, the, the section, Article 10, which talks about creating a system of education that will develop the full educational potential of each person of the state. I think your work does that, and I appreciate your work. Wanted to draw your attention to a, what I consider somewhat of a historic piece of legislation that passed, and that is House Bill 252. Not only did it increase teacher salaries in, in lots of places, but the second half of House Bill 252 is the future-ready payment. You all are familiar with programs similar to Advanced Opportunities or Transformational Learning Grants. Learning Grants. In my opinion, those were the College and Career Readiness Bills 1.0. This Future Ready Payment that we are about ready to embark on is really College and Career Readiness 2.0, and it really will impact every school in the state. There's an incentive for districts to infuse not only dual enrollment, but also CTE and work-based learning. Also, in case you didn't know, there's also an incentive for K-8 schools as well. So a portion of the incentive can go to a K-8 school that's getting kids ready for college and career readiness, so that's exciting. A couple of things I wanted to mention, there are three agencies involved. There's OPI, Department of Labor, and the Commissioner of Higher Ed's Office. So this is also a historic opportunity for all three of those agencies to work together to get this implemented. We hosted a webinar last week. We had 200 school district leaders on the webinar. We have very rarely had that many, so I know that they're really interested in this piece of legislation. There was another 100 people that watched the webinar after because we recorded it. All three of those departments presented on the webinar. I just wanted to shout out some appreciations. First of all, Office of Public Instruction is working really hard to make sure this implementation occurs over the next year. By the way, the Future Ready Payment, even though we won't get money until 2028, the students that we're accounting, those are current seniors, class of 2026. Those are the kids that are in our pipeline right now and will be counted for the Future Ready Payments. So OPI is working on the process to help us get those kids counted. Department of Labor and Industry has produced a list of CTE certifications that will count. Commissioner of Higher Ed's Office has done some great work. You saw the panel this morning that talked about that work-based learning opportunity. But Commissioner of Higher Ed, for example, has been coordinating the AP opportunities across all university systems, something that hasn't been done in my 30 years here in Montana in public education. The coordination of those AP credits is just monumental. So I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing so hard to get this done. And I see I have eight seconds left. The last thing I'll say is, at what I started with, we all have an opportunity to increase opportunities for all of our kids, no matter where they live in Montana, and we all have to work together to make sure they reach their full educational potential. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work in this area on behalf of the school administrators. Is there any further public comment on anything that wasn't on our agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for welcoming to your meeting.